Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Franklin Regional Board of School Directors Committee, the whole meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2024.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Here.
Mr. Wyman?
Here.
Mr. Prinsky?
Here.
For present.
Thank you. We were in executive session from 6:30 to 7:40 for contractual legal obligations. And now I will mention on here that we have the PSBA honor roll of school board services, Dr. Perino.
It's actually my honor to recognize Mr. Scott Wyman for five years of school board.
And next, Dr. Perino for the superintendent's report, please.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to start off by introducing Mr. Suwak, who is going to make a presentation about some students who had a pretty impressive accomplishment, as well as our entire student body who had a pretty impressive accomplishment. Mr. Suwak.
Thank you, Dr. P. Good evening, everybody. As the members are probably aware, Act 35 of 2018, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, requires all school districts to assess students in civics, government, and United States history. That can either be done using a locally developed assessment. Career prep level of our ninth grade Legacy of Western Thought class, and that's given in the spring of every student's freshman year. Last spring, as a result of the commitment to civic education, and we thank you for that, we had three students score perfect on that exam. Two of them are here tonight, and I appreciate the board's time in recognizing them. Hamna and Jenna, if you would please come forward and receive the assessment of civic knowledge for your perfect scores.
Hi, everybody.
I'll ask a question. What did each of you view as the most important thing you learned from that study or for that test in preparation?
I think for the first time, we learned a lot about our constitution, and we went through each amendment, and we talked a lot more in depth about it, and that was the first time we really did that in school. I think that was really valuable.
I also agree. I think that that was probably one of the most important, just learning the structure of our government and our founding documents.
Good for you both, and thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Again, thank you again, and pending a soccer schedule, our third recipient may be here with you in October.
Great.
Wish everybody a great evening.
Thank you. Please, Ms. Gillen can take your photos outside. Thank you.
Next up, I have Dr. Boginski, who will provide an update on Mind Up and the work being done around that.
Good evening. Our mic's working. That didn't sound like it was working either. Is it working now?
No. No.
Okay, how about now? Is it me?
No, I didn't pick it wrong. No.
How about now? Test.
Thanks for your patience. We'll try to make sure that we can get the mics on. I think I was wrong. Anybody needs me to repeat, we can do that. Fantastic. Great question.
Test, test.
Am I in a dead zone?
People at home can hear them. It's the people in the audience that can't.
And I'll talk really loudly.
Okay. Beautiful. Thank you.
Can we put this slide up? So I have one slide to share, just so we can kind of take a look at these dates. The Mind Up Administrator Training was supposed to occur in August, but there were some delays to that. So our Mind Up Administrator Training will occur on Wednesday, September 25th, at 9:30 a.m., and that will include K-8 school principals, as well as central office administrators, followed by the Mind Up Leadership Team Training, and that will include staff and parent representatives from the K-2, 3-5, and 6-8 buildings. And that will occur on October 16th, from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m., which then will result in a public review meeting where we talked about bringing everyone together who's interested in learning about what the administrators and leadership team learned in November. And so we will set, I'll have that date ready for the October board meeting, so that we can give everyone advance notice for that November public meeting. It will be in a more of an informal setting. We'll do a little bit of a presentation, but then lots of time for questions and answers and looking at the materials. So those are our next three events that will occur, and that's all part of the initial timeline that was approved, and I will continue to bring back those dates as we move forward. So we'll have them way in advance.
Has there been some kind of base program developed at all? Has there been anything?
The initial, your question is, has there been anything developed yet? And the answer is no. The initial training for administrators, and when you look at that timeline that I brought to the board, that was the first step. That was just delayed a month because some, there were some travel issues with weather and illnesses in the Mind Up company. So we'll see that in September, September 9th, October, and then that November meeting will be, we'll be able to share everything we learned in those two meetings. So nothing has occurred.
Okay, thank you.
Just to reiterate, what's on this slide are basically that first phase or bracket of
Correct.
topics that were at the very beginning of that schedule. So we've not moved to Phase 2 yet. We're nowhere near implementation. It's purely just informational learning.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And also, the public people that are going to be involved, and people like me, that would be after November, then?
That would be, at the October board meeting, I'll bring a date for November, and we can even do more than one date in November for those meetings to occur. We could do a daytime and then an evening one.
Okay, thank you.
I would prefer just to do them in person. Virtual gets really tricky, but if people do need to come in on a Google Meet, we can do that as well, but I'd like to try to do in person.
Okay, thank you.
My final item for tonight is, for the superintendent's report, really is a heartfelt thank you to our first responders, as well as our medical professionals. On Friday night, the football game, those of you that may not know, I don't know how you don't know now in the Facebook world, but we had a gentleman from Latrobe who had had a heart attack, or went into cardiac arrest in the stands. When, that night was our first responder recognition event that we hold every year. It was first responders and major sponsors. Of course, those of you who have gone to football games know that we regularly have ambulance personnel there, medics, as well as our fire department that comes and supports the Panthers. By every time we score, you'll hear them in the end zone. Not to mention our police that are there as well, as well as our police, our school police, in addition to Murraysville Police. There's a lot that goes into making a Friday night happen. Obviously, that gentleman had a major medical incident, and at the time, not only did our first responders, who are typically there, respond, but we had, we called for medical professionals, and we had several medical professionals respond that night and administer life-saving CPR to that man. He is in the hospital still. I won't go into his specific medical things, that's for him, but thankful for all of the people who were there, all the people there who were there as citizens, but responded with their civic duty, as well as their professional duties. And watching that was, was pretty amazing, and I realized, you know, as someone who has family, my own, one of my own children in the medical profession, the impact that they make, and what they face on a daily basis, because what they did and how they responded saved someone's life, but they do that every day. And so I guess I'm very, I thank God every day that I live in a community that has the resources and the people that are committed to doing those types of things for their fellow citizens. I would love, I don't know everyone that responded that night, and I would love to know everyone that responded that night, so if you're listening, or you know, and you can get me some of those names, I would be grateful. But, you know, thank you, and really appreciate the folks that we have serving our community. And that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Perino, and I echo those sentiments. I think the gentleman and his family would probably echo as well, because, you know, the fact that he was there and had attention right away helped save his life, as opposed to being somewhere else where medical attention wasn't that readily available. So it was amazing feat to be able to see them snap into action. With that, we will now turn to public comments, and we'll start with Helen Elliott.
Helen Elliott, 3166 Chestnut Street in Murraysville, 15668. First, I'd like to say, Dr. P, it's a good thing you didn't hold your breath about the property being, heritage property being cleared and grass. It's a good thing you didn't hold your breath on that, because you'd be in trouble. Okay, I want to address number 11 on the agenda tonight, the adoption and announcement of the Franklin Regional Panther online store. I was reading this online earlier today, and I'm just like, whoa, how did this come about? Whose idea was this and why? Why do we want to consider this? I read the rationale that was given on that, and for $2,500 to me is piddly in this several million-dollar budget that we have here at Franklin Regional. We don't have a problem spending $10,000 on the assessment thing that we want to do, and coming up is a proposal to do things at Heritage School for $26,000. $2,500, I don't get it. But more importantly, I don't think this justifies canceling or negating capitalism and/or competition. Competition, capitalism, these are the things that help keep prices down. This plan to, to make everything central, or give it to one particular company, that is blocking small businesses from their fair share of doing business in, for Franklin Regional. I don't know what's the thinking or reasoning behind this, other than that rationale that was put on there, which I still, doesn't give me enough answers. An exclusive contract allows Fox, or whoever the company is, to set prices instead of having to deal with competition, and competition helps keep prices down. The only talk on this is about an online store, which, how does that affect items that have previously been sold at football games, or at band concerts, or something like that? What's, what's the correlation between those? And believe it or not, some folks do not have computers. I mean, that may be hard for any of you sitting up there to believe, but there are some people out there who don't have computers, who could do online shopping, and even if they do, they may not want to do online shopping. They don't want all their information online. So I'm just not for this at all. It doesn't say anything about how long this supposed contract is, and I certainly hope that this is talked about a lot by you guys and given us more information. We need transparency. We need to do more research on just how this came about and why it came about. On number 14, the humidity moisture mitigation and reconstruction at the primary school, I'm wondering what happened there to cause this need? Because it wasn't very many years ago, we spent big bucks of the taxpayers' money to rehab that school. So what, what happened at that school to cause this need to redo two classrooms? On number 15. That's it? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up, Kristy Troutman.
Hey, good evening. My name is Kristy Troutman. I live at 4043 Sloanwood Drive in Murraysville. I have a senior in the district. I am really excited about a number of things that are on tonight's agenda. To me, they speak to a holistic way of thinking about excellence in our schools. Several of us were very excited to attend the curriculum committee meeting and can't wait for more of the programming that is being proposed to come for public conversation. I was also very excited about the athletic feasibility study assessment project. We are doing an excellent job, in my opinion, with academics. It was great that the band recently got new uniforms. We've had more vocational programs in place. Our arts program is top-notch, and our athletic facilities are terrible. You can't get a field, as Helen said several meetings ago. The locker rooms and restrooms are horrifying. The girls don't have locker rooms, so it's high time. Sports are a pathway to the future, future opportunities for many kids. Scholarships, a lot of really important life skills and work skills, and so I think investing in that makes all kinds of sense. I'm glad it's on the agenda. I'm glad we've gotten there. I am curious about the architectural firm and how they were chosen, what the process was. I have really no idea of what the threshold is for competitive bids, all of that, so I trust that more will be said about that. And then like Helen, I also did have a question about the $27,000 ServPro contract, and wondering if that was related to the renovations a few years ago, and if that's, if there might be contractual issues there was of concern. And just want to add my thanks to Medic One and the whole Franklin Regional community. It was stunning to be there, and I remain grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Amy Sheridan.
My printed notes at home. Hi, I'm Amy Sheridan. I am a parent and a public school enthusiast, as you all know by now. I live at 2785 Walker Court in Export. Thanks, as always, for the opportunity to address the board and the administration, and also our Franklin Regional community. When you visit the district website, the first sentence you see is the mission statement, and the central theme of that statement is striving for excellence. Now, my kids don't need to be driven to dance or sports anymore, so I am that parent that goes to all the committee meetings. So I'm going to talk about what I see when I go to those meetings, and what I want other parents to see and know is going on. Let's talk about how the school district is living up to the mission that's on the homepage. For example, there are 11 policies on the agenda tonight. The administration has carefully written and repeatedly reviewed each one, and the committee has weighed in as well, so that by the time the policies are presented in this meeting, the policies align with federal and state requirements, of course, but the policies have also been written for our Franklin Regional students and our families. So policies are important work. It's tedious to spend time on small word choices, but those policies about how we want our Franklin Regional students to learn, they matter so much. This dedication to the small details is emblematic of this work we're doing towards excellence. And then there's what our students are learning. Last week at the curriculum meeting, we had a number of teachers present ways that they proposed to build student engagement and learning. They asked for authorization on new pieces of curriculum. As you expect from teachers, they'd done their homework. They've created amazing opportunities for our students, and in some cases are even working to help fund these educational opportunities. Because of their work in seeking to improve upon current materials, the students have a chance to go deeper, to learn more, to experience more, and to even contribute to the body of knowledge. It's really tremendous. So tonight, we'll hear about new curriculum and each of these new curricular pieces that was chosen to make a difference for our students. Asking to improve upon what we have demonstrates a growth mindset, a continued commitment to striving for excellence. These expert educators are rock stars, and these curriculum improvements seem to be something that students will get to experience and frankly, enjoy, perhaps even this year. But it's not enough to be looking at this school year. Our administrators are eyeing the future. What do we, as a school community, need to do to be ready for the future? They even have plans to ask parents, how can we do education better? Administration has our focus on the future of the Franklin Regional education, and so as a parent who's watching very, very closely, I don't take the excellent work of the talented individuals in this district for granted. We're grateful for the work that's being put in for the future of the education of Franklin Regional students, so thank you all for your contributions.
Thank you. Next up, Susan Bane.
Good evening. I'm asking Laura, who's next in line, to also come up with me, because we represent the Franklin Regional Boys and Girls Soccer Boosters Program. I'm the president, and Laura represents the boys. And so we were coming tonight to speak to you about what happened with, and I also am a parent for the football team, and my son is the kicker, so I have children in both programs, and as such, I just found out today about the online store and have serious concerns about that, and how that will affect the booster organizations that rely on fundraising through selling of merchandise. And I wanted to ask that maybe we put a pause on this decision, and maybe that we speak with the different booster organizations about how this will affect us before we move forward with this decision. I also believe football is here tonight to discuss this, and, you know, we would like a pause, if possible. I, I'm not sure, Laura, do you have anything you wanted to say about?
Yeah, I'm, so sorry, just, my name is Laura Vrabel. I'm also a resident in Export on 5505 Fontana Court, and as Susan says, I'm representing the Franklin Regional Soccer Boosters, but I have children that play multiple sports. We buy merchandise from multiple vendors. It's, not everybody likes the same thing. All different vendors have different choices, different availabilities of merchandise. Also, a concern is if we have one vendor that everyone has to use the same vendor to use the FR logos to provide merchandise for our teams and organizations. We're all, there's a huge peak and push at the beginning of the year for school starting. One company can only do so much business, and so our wait times would be long, our supply lines would be long. We'd have the inability to get the goods quickly to our teams to support and show up at the games, and for parents to have access to facilities or to the different merchandise to show up for their kids' events. Another concern is some of the vendors in the area have actual brick and mortar stores, so if you needed something for grandma to come to your kid's event on Friday, you could go to the store that day, buy something. My knowledge is limited stock at Fancy Fox right now. If you walk in there, there's very few things you can buy and walk out that day. You have to place orders in order to get goods. I'm concerned, as someone already mentioned about, the monopoly and only having one source to go to, and what that does to pricing, and what that does to the choices for parents. A $20 sweatshirt could end up being $75 now, making it unaffordable for many people to buy. And like I said, we work with different organic vendors, and the boosters goes out and talks to these people that provide different spirit wear, and say, how can you support our teams? How can you help us? We're willing to push the products, sell the products, and we get a benefit to the team. We raise money so we can do things directly for that team, not just spread it across thousands of students. We can say, okay, we're doing this so we can get photos for the kids. We can get food for the kids on the way home from the bus. We can provide something on senior night that the school doesn't provide. And then for me, to be able to just, the seniors on the soccer team on the boy side, they design a warm-up every year, so it's their choice to go look out there, find out what's out there on Nike or whoever, and come up with a design that's unique that they want to do, and then we have to be able to go somewhere and market that and produce it, and if we only have one choice, we may not have that option. Or maybe you get three items. This is what we have. That's what you get to design. So that's what, I just wanted to make sure if we could have time to talk about it. It was a surprise to me to hear about this today, and I'd like the board to consider waiting, so everyone can be aware of what's going on, be transparent about what we're trying to do, and make sure that the organizations who really try to sell this stuff and buy it have an opportunity to participate and understand the decisions.
Yeah, and I also wanted to add something I was just talking to Laura about. I was there Friday night, and I love the fact that the CPR was being done for, you know, by so many different people. It'd be nice if our students had the opportunity to learn CPR. It is a free class. I'm not sure if we've ever offered that, but that would be a great idea. I know you can get certified in middle school up, so it'd be a great opportunity for our students to have that during their school time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joy Sigmund?
Hi, I'm Joy Sigmund. I live at 6022 Kennedy Avenue in Export. I'm here on behalf of the Franklin Regional Football Boosters. I'm the president this year. I'm going to piggyback on what Susan said. This just came to my attention today about this online store, and I'm here to implore you to not give exclusive rights to any one company for merchandise. Football, we have, we have about 80 families that we cover. Our budget is $90,000 this year. It's the most we've ever had. By the end of the year, we will have spent more than $20,000 on clothing. That's for players and coaches and other special events. We're hoping for a playoff run. We're hoping to get, you know, playoff gear at the end of the year. We bargain shop. We call around. We try to find who can give us the best prices and also fit into our timeline. Truly, a lot of it is last minute. My big fears, like where has already been said, is that, you know, with one vendor, we're going to be limited on what we can have access to. We're going to be limited on the timeline of that. You know, of that $90,000, we fundraise that 100%, ourselves, and some of that is by these companies that give back some money to us for using them, for the clothing. Some of it is just true spirit wear. Some of it is just true spirit wear that the parents are paying for, that we, you know, we mark up to fund all of the things that we do. So it would really greatly impact our booster organization if this is where this is going. I also would respectfully ask for a pause to have some sort of input from these organizations. It's not just obviously football, it's soccer band cheer. Those are the four of us that all work together, but you know, there's others also that are all in the same timeline. So I would respectfully ask that you give us some consideration moving forward. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Elaine.
In the district, I am a member of the Franklin Regional Baseball Boosters. And again, I'd like to reiterate what these other ladies have spoken about having the online store and the exclusivity of that affecting specifically our booster organization and going out to many of the local vendors, asking for support, specifically one that's here with us tonight. She's not able to speak, but she's donated a large basket of items for us to raffle at our annual Night of the Races. That's our largest fundraiser, and we go out to many different vendors for that reason. And I do think it would hurt us, as they've all spoken about. So I ask as well for your consideration and a little bit more time to discuss that item. Thank you.
Thank you. And Diana Han. On the committee of the whole? Yeah, you're on the bottom of the committee of the whole. You're good? All right, that concludes the public comments. Any solicitor comments this evening?
No comments tonight, sir.
All right, thank you. We will now move on to the FRSB School Board Representative for the WIU Board of Directors. I first want to thank Dr. Tracy Eschman Ray. That, some new obligations. She is not able to continue to do that based on time commitments, but I do want to applaud her for her efforts and all the time and everything that she has put in at this particular point in time. So we'll need to elect a new representative for the school board to represent us on the WIU. And so I would need a motion to approve somebody or elect somebody to do that.
I'll motion Deb Olean.
I have a motion by Mark and a second by John. Is there any other motions? All right. So at this particular point in time, I have a motion to approve Deb Olean as the Franklin Regional School District Representative on the WI Intermediate Unit Board of Directors to complete a term commencing from September 17th, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2026. Do I need to do anything else with that, Mr. Solicitor? Do we need a vote? I don't think so. Not on this one? We'll reintroduce it next meeting. Okay, very good. So that's the motion to approve on that. At this particular point in time, we have a slate of candidates for review for the PSBA and their officers. At this particular point in time, it's just to review the president-elect, the vice president from the PSBA, as well as the Western Zone Representative and then insurance trustees. Any questions with that? Okay. Then we'll move on to Dr. Smith and the St. Vincent Prevention Project.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. I have two items for your consideration. First one is the St. Vincent Prevention Project, looking at two programs. One, elementary real, it's for grades one, two, and three. You can see the total there per day. And then the second is a high school program for teens where it's small group support at $900 per day as well. Any questions with St. Vincent Prevention? And this is an annual ongoing contract.
Any questions for Dr. Smith? Okay. Moving on to the Catapult Learning Professional Service Agreement.
Thank you. And this is for our Title I funds to support academic services to Moss School. This is utilizing our federal funds for Title I ballpark of over a little $10,000. And then we also have a carryover from last year in excess of $10,000 for a total of close to $20,500. And you can see how the expenses are utilized there for achievers, K-8, achieve math, K-8, small group sessions offered to support the students at Moss. Questions from the board?
Any questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Next up, the Watson Institute Social Center for Academic Achievement Agreement, Dr. Grawski.
Good evening. On the agenda, I have three items for your consideration. All of these agenda items are related to special education placement and student needs. First is the Watson Institute or WISCA in Sharpsburg. Then we have Presley Ridge, addendum number seven. It's an addendum because back in August of 2017, the original contract with Presley Ridge was signed and adopted. This is just giving us the cost. So nothing has changed with the original agreement, but over the years, the costs have changed, and that's why it's an addendum item. And the last is a student agreement. Any questions about those items?
Any questions with those agreements?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grawski. Mr. Perry, let's start with the authorization of the joint purchasing consortium.
Good evening. I have two, the next two agenda items both relate to our participation in the WIU purchasing consortium. The first is the approval of the district's representatives to represent the district on the consortium board, and the second is just a permission to advertise jointly with the other school districts that participate in that consortium. And these are annual items for approval, and we purchase our multi-purpose copy paper and diesel and gasoline used for transportation through that consortium.
Any questions for Mr. Perry?
Next, we have gifts, grants, and donations for the month. $26,318.36 from the FR Panther Foundation. This was our 2024 round of innovation grants. Three teachers were awarded grants, $9,994 to the middle school, $12,005 to the intermediate school, and a second grant to the intermediate school totaling $4,519.
Any questions for Mr. Perry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, number 11, adoption and announcement for the FR online store, Dr. Pirino.
Sure. I'm going to take the opportunity to explain this as much detail as I possibly can. The, you know, we went right into the rationale with that. As we look, you know, people mentioned facilities earlier, people mentioned programs earlier, and we have invested a tremendous amount of time and effort and money into programs. We know that athletics and the arts, and I know we said, we do have a fantastic arts program. Our goal is to grow all of those and look at those facilities. And one of the things I've been charged with as superintendent is to find alternative revenue sources. About eight years ago, we went and created a brand along with logos and things of that nature. We went and trademarked those. We wanted to get control of our brand, and we looked at this as a future revenue production opportunity. Doing so, we also knew that we weren't ready for that yet because we, A, we didn't have someone that could meet the demand. We didn't have someone that could do multiple phases. One, have a storefront in the community. Two, be online. And three, also work with our booster organizations. So we allowed our booster organizations to take that logo and do with it as they may. One of the things we've seen is different uses of our colors, different uses of our logos, and sometimes put on merchandise that we wouldn't necessarily always want to see it on. So that being said, we have been working with Fancy Fox through multiple owners for a number of years for district-related purchases, whether it be for our staff or our custodians or for our administrators or staff sales and things of that nature. And so we have used them with a lot of success in the past. We looked at this and knew we wanted to get control of the brand. We knew also how important this is to our boosters. And so when we worked on developing this type of agreement, we wanted someone that could have the online store, the storefront, as well as have the ability to not only work with our existing brand, but have the professionals on staff also to help us develop new logos and advanced logos and help us work with the foundation on giving and things of that nature. When talking to another organization that was looking to buy Fancy Fox, and we had that, and that fell through. And then when Unity stepped in and purchased, we had a meeting with them and talked about that potential. Looking at that, the way we, the way we want to run this is we're looking to launch the Panther Den, which is an online store that will be available year-round so people could go online and buy merchandise, as well as the opportunity to go into the store and buy merchandise as well. The other side of this is also working with our boosters. And we actually went out to meet with them, looked at their production facility, looked at their array of products, talked about the possibility even expanding those products, and we're really satisfied in terms of their ability to produce. From a booster standpoint, our viewpoint with the boosters is obviously you have your periods of sales that you can continue to have, where that'll be available online for you to be able to sell those goods, but not just during your season, all year-round. So if you want something at a different point in time of the year, you'll be able to get online to whatever that team is and purchase those goods, and the boosters receive those funds for whatever that product is. And so the reality is the businesses that have been using that without permission have been using a trademarked logo without explicit permission from the district. And so right now, you know, we're looking to work with those businesses to give them time to clear their merchandise, fulfill existing contracts. But the thought is, if we can create a revenue stream for the district, we also create more opportunities for our kids. When we figure expansion of different programs, whether that's sports conditioning programming or what have you, but it's creating that revenue.
Board have any questions?
And how will this affect prices, Dr. Perry?
The, I can't give you a price. It depends on the merchandise. And so the reality is there will be a range of products, from less expensive products to your more expensive products. So anything from entry-level products through Under Armour and Nike, through Vineyard Vine and other things I wouldn't even buy myself, right? And so there'll be a range of products and an opportunity, if there's a demand, for that expansion of product.
But they'll be marked up and the costs will be passed on.
You know, the boosters are, it's no different. So there's the price, and there is the markup for the district, and then the markup for the boosters.
But the board has asked Dr. Pirino to go out and find external revenue sources because we hear we can't put everything on the taxpayer. So what he did was go out and found an external revenue source. I can't hear.
It's a public comment, I don't know, but...
What was the, one of the concerns raised by the speakers had to do with relation of options. And you talked about the low-level, mid-level, and high-level entry, you know, range of, let's say, quality within one, like a hoodie or a pullover or something. But the options as far as like clothing, like jerseys, polos, hoodies, those are also going to exist, they're going to be available. And that's what, it's not like there's going to be one, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not going to be one hoodie brand that has to be sourced, and that's all you have.
Right.
One cut of hoodie or something. They're going to have variability. You know, this polo I'm wearing now is from Fancy Fox before they were purchased by Unity Printing. So when I went in there, I think I had like 30 different choices of a brand of polo. And then I got, you know, trimmed down when I went into athletic, you know, moisture-wicking type polo. So I don't think we're now at that level of range because that would then become, you know, paralysis by analysis, but there's still going to be a range of products and opportunities available to people to say, again, I need something maybe faster, I want to go with this option, I want to get something more quality because we won playoffs, and we want to have something really nice. There's going to be those options available.
Correct. So Beth, Beth will be available to work with our booster, booster organizations to select product lines that fit what they want to accomplish and to customize for them. Whether it's warm-ups or what have you, there'll be that level of customization that can occur.
The other thing I think I heard quite commonly was timeframe turnaround for product. So if we have, you know, we're coming up to the playoffs and we're going to, we think we're getting into it, obviously you don't want to spend a bunch of money, and then, you know, the worst happens, we don't get in the playoffs. So Unity has to be prepared to meet that demand in a short timeframe. They've committed to doing that. They, I assume, have familiarity with other school districts, other instances where they have to produce a product quickly to meet the demand that's needed. So that should be something also addressed by this.
And they've done, and they've done that with other teams in the past.
And I think the other question was, is multiple sports happening at one time, right? So the beginning of a season, more so than just a playoff game or something like that, beginning of a season. So you've got a fall sports season that encompasses boys soccer, boys and girls, football, and multitudes of different sports. Having somebody like that, they have the volume and production line to be able to accommodate that, yes?
Right, they do. If that doesn't happen, this contract, if there's a performance issue, this contract allows for an out based upon a lack of performance. And if there's a failure to meet those types of demands, then obviously we would exercise that.
And I think the last.
What are we doing?
Hold on. Yeah, I understand. We're going to try to get to your questions up here and ask, but it's not a public comment section right now. But we'll get to that here. With regard to some of the, when you mentioned the boosters have periods of sales for to generate their time, this contract, how flexible is that to determine when an item is being purchased for a specific, do the boost, will the boosters have the ability to talk with the district and say, well, these are items that are part of our revenue generating for the year or just a small period of time? Is there flexibility in that, the idea of working with the boosters to even expand, expand that timeframe where they may have to, otherwise we're organizing and doing one sale versus having this available all through the year for that? Is there flexibility to talk?
Right. And they'll customize to meet the needs of the organization in terms of that flexibility.
And what's the notice period, Dr. Perry, if timing or quality or whatever the issues might come up? What kind of notice do we have to give them?
I think it's 180 days. Same thing, we're talking about being able to clear merchandise. They can also do the same for us. If they would terminate that agreement, the 180 days provides us the same opportunity so that way we can seek another vendor.
I think a third comment...
I think a third comment that I heard that I find interesting is the capitalism topic. So we become exclusive with a provider or supplier, and they say, hey, we have full rights to this. We're going to charge $100 for a hoodie versus $30. Now, I don't expect to make that drastically change because we're going to have a lot of unhappy parents, community members, and I'm sure none of us on the board will be happy either. But how do we, is there a way that we can manage that? I know we have the term of the agreement that's obviously an opportunity to say, hey, you guys were playing games. If it happens, then we can say we're done, we're going to go find other opportunities. But is there any way we can manage that within the bounds of the contract in that three year to say, set a limit to the increase year to year? I mean, it's hard for us to estimate inflation and things like that, but is there something we can do from that perspective? And that might be...
Question, I can't, I don't have the answer to that. I can't, I can't set prices, no.
Any additional questions?
The Franklin Regional School District owns our trademark.
We do own that trademark. We paid for its development as well as the trademarking process. You know, the FR that was developed in the current form was developed 2014, 200... Can you come to the microphone so that way people at home can hear it as well? Thank you.
The district currently owns seven licenses for the state of Pennsylvania for our trademarks. Two of them are word trademarks for Franklin Regional and Franklin Regional Panthers. They are all set to go and expire in 2028 with the newest one, which is the Panther mascot due to expire in 2027. Those trademarks cost us approximately $5,000 to $6,000 every several years to keep them trademarked and licensed for us.
So that's all part of capitalism is owning your trademark.
We do own all of those trademarks, and we have for some time. Is there anything else?
At this time?
Dr. Perrino, we'll move on to the Olympus Energy School Board Agreement.
You'll notice in here, I'm recommending a scoreboard agreement with Olympus Energy for the gymnasium. That's a gold-level sponsorship. That's a five-year sponsorship for $5,000 a year. That's the main board in the gymnasium. Proceeds from that go into the FR Panther Foundation, which will pay for things like special projects as well as innovation grants.
Any questions on the Olympus Energy School Board Agreement? Next, Dr. Perrino, the comprehensive...
So in 2016, we completed a comprehensive facility study that really looked at our vision for educational programming in combination with the condition of our infrastructure. And so they went through across the campus, looking at various conditions, looking at where they were in terms of their lifespan, and made recommendations. Out of that came concepts that led to the development of the elementary campus, which is the Franklin Regional Intermediate School, as well as the Franklin Regional Primary School, where you see things like innovation centers, streamed classrooms, and flexible comment spaces, where we were able to really transform how we educate students. We've started some of that work through some retrofitting at the high school and middle school, as well as upgrading some of the mechanicals in those existing facilities over that time. And so the elementary campus was phase one. That continuation of the work to the secondary and fixing those facilities was phase two. But knowing that phase three was going to involve some combination of secondary renovation and development. I go through and I look at where we are as the parent of an athlete, but also as the superintendent. I know that right now we lack athletic fields to meet the current needs. I know, and that's just not Franklin Regional varsity, JV and middle school needs, that's our community needs around fields for youth sports as well as community recreation needs. We have a lack of gym space for our athletic teams, our youth sports, and community recreation. We have a lack of locker rooms for our athletic teams, youth sports, and recreational needs. And the current condition of these facilities, they need attention. A lack of pool time, as well as the condition of our current pool, is a significant issue. Team and community meeting spaces continue to be an issue. Sports medicine facilities are an issue in terms of size, in terms of condition, in terms of resources. Strength and conditioning, we have a weight room, but it really doesn't meet the needs of all teams. And we have a lack of training space for our teams. And that includes our baseball teams and our softball teams in terms of our kids are at a competitive disadvantage when we're canceling practices and they can't practice or they can't train in the offseason. So this study will help us develop a plan to meet the needs of our athletic programs while, and our community sports by gaining input and insight from them, but also by looking at the future. And we want to do so, we want to look at this because we have to make informed decisions. We have to make decisions that are based upon facts and in a way that is responsible to the taxpayer while still allowing for us not just to focus on athletics or just focus on arts, but also include the academic renovations at the secondary level. And so this is that process. And also, part of this involves looking at ways that we can find alternative sources of funding to help meet the expense and development of some of these spaces. So my recommendation is that we contract with HHSDR Architects for a comprehensive athletic feasibility study. As outlined, contingent upon the district solicitor's final review and approval of the contract to ensure compliance with all applicable legal requirements and interest of the Franklin Regional School District. Someone asked how we selected them. The board went through a selection process where they interviewed various architectural firms who made presentations that evening. Whoever does this study will not necessarily be the company that designs that next facility. I anticipate we'll go through another process to really select, to look into those companies again. We don't, it's not a bid process because it's a service. It's a service contract, and so that's why, you know, when you look at architectural services and things like that, it doesn't go to the lowest bidder. And so we're looking for approval for the study as well as authorizing us to work with HHSDR to begin step one of the study.
Any questions from the board?
This is more so what can be done, not what will or shall be done.
So they'll come out of this with options for you to consider, just like we did with the 2016 study. There'll be options, and the board will go through a process of narrowing down those options and choosing which one allows them to meet, you know, their overall goals and objectives.
Just a minor point of clarification. It's professional services and not just services. So like Dr. Perrino was saying, all of those types of industries require special licensure or certification. So that's why we're allowed to go through that process.
Additional questions on the study?
One last question, maybe in the documentation. What was the timeframe we were expecting completion of the feasibility study?
So our hope is to have some type of presentation late in the spring. However, we're going to do our due diligence to make sure that if we come, if we're not happy with the options, that we go out and push them to produce the options that we want or that we think are best. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, as we're going through this process, to understand the needs at the middle school and the high school is really important to me, anyway, to make sure that we are able to do renovations in those buildings as well. Athletics is very important, and I know we've got a lot of work to do there, but understanding we only have so much borrowing capacity or other fund sources, like we've already talked about tonight, identifying those other funding sources so it doesn't all fall on the taxpayers.
Another thing to understand is that we have walked through this whole campus, all of us, and we can see such a difference in all the new wonderful buildings that we have and some of the ones, the older ones, they're just like dark and they're just, there's such a contrast between our new buildings and our old buildings. And there's work that needs to be done, but it's not going to be done all at one time. This is like going forward, and this is not something that we're going to be doing tomorrow. And that needs to be kept in perspective.
And that's important because when we talked about the previous board that worked with the elementary campus, one of the things, two things, two of their goals, one was not to tie the hands of future boards. They would create as much flexibility as possible. The other thing we knew is that, looking at the work that needed to be done, that it wasn't going to be a five-year process. It was going to be more like a 15-year process to get to the point where all of our facilities were up to par and that we got onto a renovation, construction cycle. And so this is the next step in that process.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure Dr. Ramey's still. I wasn't sure if she had the opportunity to comment.
Racy, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We were just verifying.
Any additional questions from anybody from the board? Okay. We'll move on to item 14, the humidity moisture mitigation and reconstruction at the primary. Mr. Johnson.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Excellent.
Good evening.
How are you?
Number 14, humidity moisture mitigation reconstruction at the primary school. Right before school started, we had a issue with the HVAC DDC controls that were not communicating to the mechanicals properly. These two classrooms got the brunt of the moisture damage within that and humidity damage. We had to call in ServPro to come in and mitigate that so we could get those classrooms ready for school to start. That had to be all, the carpet had to be removed because it was wet. We had to dehumidify the whole room. Cadentry was damaged from the moisture, so we had to pull all that out and remedy that. So we did all those things. We used attic stock carpet that was still sitting in storage so we could replace carpet. We had to run some chemicals and things like that to prevent any type of organic growth, things of that nature, and get that, those two classrooms ready to go for the start of school year.
And this is all done prior to the school?
It's done. It's completed. Those classrooms are up and functional right now.
Any additional questions from the board?
So you had somebody come in and inspect and make sure it was completely safe for the students to be in there for all the hours that they're going to be in there?
Yes, ma'am. We did air quality tests. We did everything we needed to do to make sure those rooms are ready to go.
Any additional questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Appreciate it.
Dr. Boginsky, the Panorama Education Survey.
Good evening. This item we are seeking approval for is the Panorama Education Platform. We are seeking approval to put it on 30-day review. I have outlined for you the details around what this phased plan would look like. So our hope would be to, during that 30-day approval time, we would have a Zoom meeting where on October 3rd, at that time that is listed here, and I included the Zoom link that we can also send out to anyone who needs it, we would have a demonstration of that platform with a proposed seeking of approval for the full platform in the October 2024 school board meeting. The goals for year one of implementation during the 24-25 school year would be to gain administrator access to all of the climate surveys in the collection. We would receive professional development and implementation support from Panorama. We would develop the climate surveys for staff and parents and guardians. Those are, those have been developed by Panorama, and there are researchers and using evidence-based information to develop those, but you don't give an entire long survey to anyone because no one will complete it. So what you end up doing with them is working through the pieces of it that you'd like to know from the staff. And in the document I provided to the school board, there are lists of questions, examples of topics, and we can choose from those for the staff and then the parents and guardians as well. Those would be optional, obviously, for staff and parents and guardians, and we would like to implement those during the 24-25 school year, hoping to give the staff the survey in the fall of 2024, and then the parents and guardians the survey in the spring of 2025. In preparation for year two in the 25-26 school year, the administrator... ...board bring that entire exact survey with all of the questions to the board in May 2025 for approval. Those questions would then be placed on 30-day review for anyone in the public to review. We would seek full approval for that climate survey for students in June of 2025. At that meeting, we would also discuss the options that Panorama provides for opt-in and opt-out for parents and guardians to determine whether their students would like to participate in this. Those would all be decisions made at the June 2025 meeting, and then the student climate survey would be implemented in the fall of 2025 with students. A communication plan will be put in place, and we would share that with you in May and June to provide all parents and guardians who would, of the students who would be of age to receive this survey with extensive notice of the survey, including all questions, and those opt-in, opt-out decisions made by the board prior to implementation. I don't have in there the cost. It is $16,252. Though includes the onboarding, so that's $18,752, and we would propose to apply for the PCCD grant funding to cover all of those costs for the three years.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I just want to say a few things. Number one, people might want to know what the climate, what they're talking about with climate. They're not talking about weather, okay? So they're going to be tracking academics, attendance, behavior, and well-being. So you have to think about, you know, the whole process of surveys, but they do, they do give the parents the opt-in, they give them choices whether they want to... or not. So you need to, you do need to think about how you feel about surveys for your children when you, when you look at this.
And just to clarify, that all, anything with the students would come back to us? So this evening, we're going forward with the parents and the staff?
Correct.
Correct. So we wouldn't be talking about the students one until May?
May. And I would bring you all of those questions in detail.
Any additional questions for anyone?
I just want to say, if you, this 30 days, you guys need to get in here and look at some of this stuff because after 30 days, your chances of changing anything go away. So find time to come in and look at the, look at what's there. And it's open to everybody now, but it's only going to be 30 days.
And there's also the Zoom call.
We have the Zoom call so that we can post that online as well. And you're welcome to call me with any questions.
Please take advantage.
So if you look in the handout I gave you, it links you to the topics and the questions. Again, it is comprehensive. For staff and parents, guardians, we would select pieces of that, but I'm not bringing those specific questions back to the board, but the student ones... those specific questions back to the board, but the student ones, you will know every single question in May for the students, yes.
Are the students' names or information attached to their responses to these questionnaires?
No.
What about the parents?
No, they're anonymous surveys.
So if all parties involved in this climate survey are anonymous teachers, everyone?
Right. We would have kind of cohort information, so we might know that all sixth graders reported that, or all sixth grade parents reported that they feel connected to the school, and here's, here are the details around how they feel connected to the school. You need some type of cohort information, so it could just collect kind of grade level or building level information, so we know where this information's coming from.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, Dr. Boginsky, on SPOTS.
Yes, so this is also an item that is being asked to go onto 30-day review. It is called SPOTS, Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, and it is being sought for students who are currently receiving social emotional support through their IEPs in the autistic and life skills support classrooms, as well as in the learning support classroom for students who are identified with emotional disturbance or goals in their IEPs where we need to help teach them social skills. So the reason that we are, we're putting this on for 30-day review, although it is for very small groups of students with very specific grade levels of teachers, K to 5, those resources are, they're lovely books. Each of the SPOTS is a different color, you can take a look at them. A lot of these books are read aloud on YouTube, and you can go and listen to them. They will be available in the K to 5 buildings, and so I'm seeking approval for K to 5 in general, although they'll be used in small groups in the special education classrooms. But in the event that a counselor would like to use them as well, I didn't want to mislead anyone and make sure we're approving them for, we're not teaching these lessons in the classrooms necessarily, but we might use them in small groups when students might be having some difficulty with certain emotions and regulating those.
Any questions from the board?
What specific benefit or value does this particular curriculum or book or content provide versus what we already offer, or that we think is going to add in addition to what we offer?
So two things. One is students get tired of hearing the same stories all the time, so giving them opportunities to choose books that they're a little more interested in or may not have seen so far, it gives us a more, more of a variety in our toolkit to work with students around these topics. Additionally, I added to your, your documents, a research report around this series, and that's hard to find with children's books, that they've actually done research around the effectiveness of this in helping students be able to regulate their emotions.
Thank you. Would this be considered more of a tier-two or tier-three program, where mine up as a tier-one program, or is that a completely different?
So, no, that's a great question. This is more of a, definitely a tier-three, sometimes tier-two. Tier-three meaning you may have three students in a group who are working with these books, maybe one student, one-on-one, sometimes with a counselor, whereas tier-one would be a classroom instruction.
Thank you. Any additional questions? And one more, the Penn State Initiative Research Partnership?
Yes, so you'll remember, we have teachers participating in the Penn State Hamel Family Human Rights Initiative Professional Development. We currently have four teachers participating in this professional development around the civic discourse and inquiry models. This request is to allow those teachers to choose whether they'd like to be a part of the research that Penn State is doing around this work. So the only information provided would be from those teachers, not related to students at all, but rather their own experiences in the professional development and how they're growing in their ability to use that inquiry model. So I, it's great research, because doing something like this at a university level is really, it's great to do, but unless you're collecting information about whether it's working for teachers, you're really not doing the whole job. So this is, all of, these are all of the documents that were provided by Penn State. It covers the IRB approval and any letters that we would have to send back to them, but the, as with any research, a teacher can choose, those four teachers can choose to be a part of it, and at any time they can stop. I mean, it wouldn't be in addition to any of the work that they're currently doing. So it would be those four teachers' choice whether they participate.
And one of the things we, we clarified too in the committee meeting was that being a part of it or not being a part of it by the teacher does not affect the actual professional development course that they get. So they don't have any pressure to sign up for this, it doesn't affect what they're getting from the course itself.
Correct.
So I do have a question, sorry I jumped the gun a little bit, but the research letter, the last sentence of the first paragraph says, "Participating educators conduct systemic studies of their own professional practices and potentially engage K to 12 students in inquiry-based learning of difficulty, or difficult issues through an educational equity lens." That means, that's something they could do as the outcome of this learning, they're not going to do this as part of the study or part of the education, because I read that as they could potentially reach out to the students to get feedback on something.
No, they cannot, that's not part of the research.
Okay, so there, there will be no student interaction, it's probably just a development for teachers or educators?
So when you take a look at how they'll collect the information, it's qualitative, so they would, the researchers would interview the teachers and ask questions around how they're using the inquiry model with no student information shared at all, rather their own practices and how they're using them.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Schekengas, Securely Classroom Pilot.
Good evening. We're looking to see permission to do a pilot program with Securely Classroom. Securely is a company that we do business with. We currently have, I think, three different products with them, and one of them is our internet content filter that filters our websites for our students. What, what Securely Classroom allows, it's an add-on to the internet content filter, it allows the teacher to have a window into the student's computer on what they're doing while they're in classroom in school, not at home, it only works during the day while they're on campus. And what the teacher can do is, if they are presenting a lesson and they want to show everybody a website, they can push that website out to all the student computers, and that's the only website they can get to, they can lock it, so they aren't able to go to YouTube or go somewhere else and be distracted by other websites. The teacher can lock that, they can also, we can set it so it is only used within the classroom, so if a student is in a teacher's classroom, the teacher can see what's on their computer, they can push websites, they can lock that computer so they can only see that website and they can't go anywhere else. The teacher cannot control that computer at all, they can't move the mouse, all they can see is what is on the web browser, on the tab, so that they push. So we're looking to do that, that will help with keeping students engaged during the day, help them be less distracted by different websites that they can get to during the school days. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Schekengas? Thanks, sir. Dr. Delp, Raisin in the Sun, 30-day review?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight seeking approval of a 30-day review of the book A Raisin in the Sun by Lorraine Hansberry. This is a proposed resource for our 10th-grade English course to increase the number of fictional pieces of literature and proportionalize fiction to nonfiction within that particular grade level.
And currently, they're using excerpts now, right? Correct, it's just they haven't been able to use the entire context of the book?
That is correct. That is correct. There are excerpts that are used, that are board-approved, excerpts in grades nine, 10, and 11, I believe, right now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Dr. Delp, at the curriculum committee meeting where this was covered, there was a teacher leader that came and spoke. Will they be at the October meeting to talk about that, or will you also be representing this implementation at the 30-day review completion in October?
If you would like to have her here, I am certain that she would like to be a part of the conversation and seek any information that you may be concerned with.
I can pose my question now to you, or some of the concerns I had, so understanding this is supposed to be fiction literature, and it's along a unit, or course unit where they're talking about, there are four different units, power of communication, power of perseverance, power of self-discovery, and the complex power of revenge. How this book was explained at the curriculum meeting, and I maybe misinterpreted this, but I believe they said it was focused upon the multi-generational interactions of that, so it was more family-oriented. While that's true, the book A Raisin in the Sun also deals starkly with racism, so there's a black family that's trying to purchase a home in a white neighborhood. I was curious as to why that was not brought up in the curriculum meeting, if it's a central aspect of that book. So if I were to Google the play Raisin in the Sun, there's, you know, multiple links, and it comes up, says the top topics or concepts of this book are racism, pride, family, things like that. So, and obviously any different results, different searches, but my concern is, if this is a central aspect of the book, why wasn't that brought up as part of the curriculum committee meetings? Because we're not worried about it, we're not worried about discussing it, I would be hard-pressed to believe that in a course where this is covered, that the students aren't going to ask questions about a very controversial topic. So do you have a response to that, or is something that?
I do. In preparation for, before we even brought this to committee, I had an opportunity to read the novel itself. I wanted to know what the content was before moving forward. Those topics are briefly mentioned within the book, but certainly predominantly, it is a manifestation of that particular family as it moves and interacts with each other, and that multi-generational piece is really a predominant theme, my non-English perspective, but it really is a lot about the relationships that are had between the individuals that are in that apartment, and the impact of what $10,000 would mean to that family, how it could impact not only their status of living, but the, what they could or could not do with that money. So there really is a major focus on this $10,000 insurance money and how that impacted each of those individuals within that particular household, and when choices are made with that money, how that residual impact is felt across those individuals. So certainly the focus on the book is on those thematic pieces, but there are a few touch points within that, to your point, but I would not describe them as major themes.
This was also written in the 1950s.
Right.
So we need to, I think it's always important to put things in context.
Timestamp it, correct. And so that's kind of a good follow-up to what I wanted to say. RD, do you have anything else to add?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm all for students discussing controversial topics, I think that makes us better people to have those discussions. My primary concern, I guess, and I think I voiced this at the curriculum meeting, was that let the students have that discussion and arbitrate or have those, you know, open discussion, I would like the teachers to be facilitators and not provide their input or perspective on that. My concern is how do we ensure that that's what happens? So I know it's one of the things like the buddy system where we're going to, you know, scouts on or that type of thing, but, you know, I want us to have these difficult books, I want us to have challenging topics, that's what makes us better, we have to be able to be prepared to have those conversations as adults and as sophomores that are approaching that to go to college. So I just, I really want to ensure that we don't violate that, from a power perspective, a teacher giving an input and saying, oh, you know, this is what the truth is because my teacher said that, versus our opinions and discussion.
And I think, I think that's just a, that comes down to the point of what you're trying to say, is we want this to be a discussion and a topic about the entirety of the book. What's the purpose of this book? When I, when I, I listened to it, I didn't read it, but I, I listened to it, and there are, this is about a poor black family from the, written in the 50s into the 60s era. There were a lot of relatable things that even I could bring from that, from a family dynamic. So it is actually an excellent story that brings a lot of factors into it, and the component of the racial dynamics that they were dealing with was actually brought up more as what was the final, thing that the family was a non-negotiable, from the mistakes they made, from the mistakes that they made with each other, the dynamics with themselves, with other people in their lives, and that ended up highlighting, you know, they all had an agreement, and it brought them together as what was a non-negotiable thing for that family. So there's plenty of opportunity, this is not, I'm going through it, it's a piece of literature that has so many other dynamics and layers to it, that somebody can put online and say that that, that's the one thing that this book talks about. I actually felt that it was just a minor component to prove a point, a bigger point of the entirety of the story. So I, I thought it was actually a very good, good piece of literature, looking at it from, from a whole, from front to, from back.
Yeah, I enjoyed the generational conversations, because they're the same ones we have today. And I listened to it too, Mark, so.
I read the book.
Good for you.
Yes, no. But I, I would agree, but it's no different than any family, when you get something that's, you know, $10,000, and what every level wants to do with that $10,000, and the dynamic of actually walking through those different scenarios, if we face it regardless of anything else, right? That's just a family situation and dealing with life. And so there's a lot to it, so, and I would agree, I found it as a minor component to it, but again, somebody could write whatever they want as their perspective to it as well. And I would acknowledge also that we, I hope that the message is driven to open the dialogue and have, you know, debate back and forth, but not be steering people in a certain direction, right? Let's talk about the issue and talk through it.
Can I mention something around that as well?
Please.
To Mr. Zrak's point. So as I said, we only have four teachers participating in the Penn State Initiative, so we've worked with Penn State to create a workshop series on September 26th, that all of our English teachers, 6 to 12, and our social studies teachers, 6 to 12, will participate in, along with all of us as administrators with Penn State, around the inquiry model, the civic discourse idea. We know that teachers come to us with professionalism, and they understand the ethics of teaching, and that their opinions have to stay out of the classroom, but we also know that with the election coming up and with difficult topics that come up with students all the time, instead of saying to them, we're not talking about that, we want them to have a way to feel supported by us, and we all can be in the room to talk about what those strategies are and how we go about that. We're really excited for that day, because we think that it will feel very supportive to our teachers, because they do a great job, we know they do, we see them doing it, but any further support we can provide to them, I think they're, they're really welcoming that. Additionally, there is a virtual workshop series that started tonight, this afternoon, and they are going to, Penn State is providing those same kind of webinars to all K to 12 educators, it's open to anyone in education to kind of listen to these types of ways of thinking and talking with their students. So it's, it's something that's coming up for lots of teachers, but we have the benefit of having Penn State available to us and running these workshops for us, so we can share how that goes with you as well.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a statement, as a former special education teacher that focused on ELA and social studies, I would often tell my students that the book, you have to read the book, that the movie's not an option, you can watch it in correlation. I have not read the play, but I took the time to watch the 1961 production with Sidney Poignier, and it was absolutely fantastic, and really reflected what I heard tonight in terms of the discussion.
Thank you. Any further questions? Dr. Delp, the Rivers Watch Program, Watchers Program.
The item I bring to you this evening is seeking approval to partner with the, for the program, the River Watchers Program, that is provided by the Foundation for High O River Education. This would be used in our environmental science classrooms at the high school.
Any questions? Comment online, I think this is just amazing, again, growth of classrooms, getting folks outside of the classroom and actually learning what's going on outside, within the rivers, and so forth, and then being able to go see it, see it as well. I think it was, it's amazing opportunity for the kids. Any additional questions? All right, Wilds?
Next item is seeking approval to have a partnership with Duquesne University on the Wilds Community Engaged Research Plan and Research Proposal Done by Duquesne University. Dr. Janovich came and spoke to us that evening, and that is seeking to get our students to engage engage in wildlife, cameras being installed in various locations to be able to gauge the mammalian wildlife that's coming through those areas, do population studies, interactions, et cetera.
Are these cameras essentially just trail cameras like hunters use?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
And the idea was for them to work through a significant amount of data, so it teaches them to apply the concepts of you can, you can understand what a different scientist or a different worker will do. This actually has the students have to put the time in, go through all the, go through all the camera time, all the data, sit through some of those little bit more tedious things, but there are also action events that they're doing to really learn what they would be doing in that field, how to get that data, how to find real data, as opposed to the shortcuts or just learning about it in concept.
And again, another opportunity to get outside of the classroom and experience. You know, obviously being a Franklin graduate, I still remember being, having gone to Sloan, Mr. Pearson taking me into woods with the birds resonates today. I can hear certain sounds and know what bird it is just because it was in drained and it was, it was a real life experience. So just awesome opportunity. Any other questions? WeVideo.
We are seeking approval of the purchase of WeVideo. This would be a site license at the middle school for 6,500, but they would also provide a pilot use for the entire high school. This is a full-scale multimedia creator that supports the development of 21st century skills and it prompts high-level engagement and course content.
Any questions on the WeVideo?
How does this differ? What, what additional capabilities does this have besides what we have now?
Excuse me. This has the ability to, for students to be able to take data and to be able to use various multimedia capabilities to create commercials, to create a variety of opportunities to be able to show their understanding through a video format that they're pretty much accustomed to in the YouTube generation.
Oh, yeah.
They're used to video vignettes and they were able to create.
Thank you.
Just a statement on this, we go to career readiness of kids into today. One of the most, especially within the sales world, one of the best ways to capture somebody is to send them a video as opposed to an email. Most people aren't going to read the email and they'll pass it, but if you send a click 30-second video of what you're doing, and this is just, again, getting them in that element, being able to do that and get them ready also in the real world of what's, what's coming from an innovation standpoint as well.
And students have used this through PPG grant funding and Mr. A.J. Danny is also seeking grant funding again. They've used it in manufacturing competitions. And the, one of the features I think that is really helpful that I have never seen before in a video creation tool is it's a lot like a Google Doc. So all of the students who are working on that video can all see it at the same time and work on it at the same time, and the teacher can watch the progress while it's happening.
Wow.
That's nice.
That's really cool.
There was a lot of discuss, some discussion about it. So it was presented more in the science classes as, as a tool, but there was a lot of discussion as we went through these different, some of these other programs that we were talking about here, even from the teachers themselves, about the capability of this to cross over into other classes, other types of things that the kids are doing. So it has the potential for a lot of flexibility. It also expands the ability for the kids to keep their content longer and work on it and develop their skill in that, which as Kevin said, is, we were kind of in agreement, was a very important tool for them in today's world of how they work.
We used to say a picture's worth a thousand words. I'm surprised no one has coined how many words a video is worth with TikTok and Instagram and so, someday.
Well, if they read it, it's worth a thousand.
The scholars. Any other questions? All right, the Stat Nursing Service Contract.
Yes, the next item, we are seeking approval of the annual contract with Stat Staffing Medical Services Incorporated for nursing services from August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025. This is an annual contract.
Any questions? Go ahead, the next contract.
We're seeking approval of the annual contract with Biata Home Healthcare Incorporated for nursing services from August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025. Again, another annual contract.
What's the difference between the two nursing services?
The availability of nursing services to be able to cover for our own needs is slim. And so the need to have redundancy and to be able to have as much availability as possible is found through both of those services.
So it's two different contracts for the same purpose, but to have redundancy?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The memorandum of agreement for Prespa?
Next item is to seek approval for a memorandum of agreement with the Fresp Collective Bargaining Unit to implement a mentoring program for any newly hired staff members to enhance their onboarding experience across the district.
Any questions with that? All right, policy review first read.
Seeking approval for the first reading of the following policies. Policy 251 Dating Violence, Policy 317.1 Educator Misconduct, Policy 336 Personal Necessity Leave, Policy 807 Opening Exercises Moment of Silence Flag Displays, and Policy 824 Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries.
Any questions on those? Policy Review Second Reads.
Seeking a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies. Policy 222 Tobacco and Vaping Products, Policy 227 Controlled Substances and Paraphernalia, Policy 323 Tobacco and Vaping Products, Policy 351 Controlled Substance Abuse, Policy 707 Use of School Facilities, and Policy 801 Public Records.
Any questions on those? And Personal Agenda.
Last but not least, we are seeking approval for the attached personnel items to be provisionally approved upon submission of appropriate documentation and clearances such as those required and any forms prescribed by the state and federal regulations.
Any questions on the Personal Agenda? Thank you, Dr. Delp. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Scott, I need a second. Second, and I would acknowledge we'll give a five-minute bathroom break. We'll come back and start at 9:31.
I was afraid you were going to start coughing too.
Me too.
It has, it definitely has merit. Definitely has merit.
All right, I would, I'd like to call to order the Franklin School Board Director's Regular Meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2024, and we will stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement, we Franklin Regional School community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. Roll call, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Fallon.
Here.
Here. Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Dr. Eshelman, Ray.
Here.
Mr. Zebak?
Awake.
Mrs. Bulley?
Here.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Here.
Mr. Wyman?
Here.
Mr. Krimsky?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. All right, I need approval of the minutes for the committee of the whole meeting, August 12th, 2024. Need a motion. Josh?
Second.
Second. Scott? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I need a motion, approval of minutes for the regular meeting for August 12th, 20, 2024. So moved. Mark, first.
Second.
Second. John? Carries. Future dates, Dr. Pirino.
Future dates include upcoming board and committee meetings. On September 23rd, 2024, there will be a policy committee meeting at 6:00 PM at the administrative offices. In our original schedule, we had a policy committee meeting scheduled for October 2nd that is canceled. Looking at the close proximity of those two meetings and the progress that we, that that committee has made, we didn't feel that we needed that, the November, or I'm sorry, the October second, second meeting. On October 9th, we have a finance committee meeting at 6:00 PM at the administrative offices. And on October 21st, a committee of the whole meeting and regular board meeting at 7:30 at the Murraysville Municipal Building. Upcoming board and committee, I'm sorry. Upcoming topics include annual agreements, gifts, grants, and donations, policy review, and personnel. And that concludes the future dates and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Pirino. I need now approval of the financial reports, the treasury report for August 2024. Need a motion to approve. Vince? First, sorry. Scott, second. Hearing, any objections? Hearing none, all in. $17.16 athletic fund to $3,892.47 for a total paid bills of $742,209.63. Unpaid bills, general fund, $1,440,863.37. Capital reserve fund, $253,875.67. Athletic fund, $34,463.94 for a total unpaid bills of $1,729,202.98. For a grand total of $2,471,412.61. Food services, $8,714.37. So grand total including food services of $2,480,126.98. I need a motion to approve the list of bills for September 2024. No move. Mark?
Second.
Second. Josh? Hearing, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, zero. And now we will move on to public comments and we will start with Helen Elliott.
Somebody left their folder here. Aries, whatever. Okay. Helen Elliott, 3166 Chestnut Street in Murraysville, 15668. I want to go to number 15, the Panorama Education Climate Survey topic and just say that I think it's very commendable that a Zoom meeting has been planned. That is wonderful. Teachers wanted to watch it, they're in school, so I really do believe there should be an evening meeting also as an option for number 15. Then I want to back up after hearing what's been discussed so far on number 11, the OnStar, On, the Franklin Regional Online Panther Store. I, please explain exactly how this contract is going to work for these booster clubs. I mean, including the monetary factor, how does that work for them? Because there's deep concern about the boosters' clubs being able to make the kind of money that they've made in the past. And do they, do they have to go through the district to put in their designs and all of that? Or are they able to work directly with this company? That wasn't clear to me. Will there be products available at events? You go to a game of some sort, are there going to be items sold there or are we strictly talking online? Or if there is a storefront, where is that storefront? How convenient is it? That's another point. How long is this contract? And then there was some discussion back here and there's some real concern that we won't be able to get our rhinestone and our glittery stuff that no one has ever seen Fancy Fox put out, any of those type products. So there's concern there. I still am very much in favor, not, not in favor of this, but in favor of letting individual companies compete, make what they make, do what the booster clubs and whoever wants to order it do. That, I think that's the way it should go. The two classrooms, I couldn't hear the gentleman who spoke on number 14. I couldn't hear him back there. So if he gave an explanation of what happened to cause this problem, I didn't hear it. And so if somebody could tell me what caused that, that moisture, et cetera, problem in those two classrooms, and it does appear, looking at the paperwork, that the work has already been done, this is just an approval to pay the bill for it. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't. Let me work down through. Come on, Mr. Perry.
You should have done the audiobook version, that's the problem.
So let's begin, I actually had the opportunity to inquire about the rhinestones. That is something that can be made available to organizations that are interested in the rhinestone. What's that?
The Helen Elliott line of rhinestone motor.
So the storefront would be at the Fancy Fox store that it currently exists within the municipality of Murraysville. And so it's right down by the big Fox, Fox's pizza warehouse. Like tied in with that. There would be products available at events. That's actually one of the things we're looking at, as well as working with our, our students in the Life Skills Program around the kiosk, having them help with those sales and to do some things to benefit their programming as well. And so it really, you know, looking to make that available through the student store and other areas also. Jen's going to have to address the Panorama Survey Evening Meeting Option. I think she'll probably have to contact the company, see if they're willing to do that, but I don't know what time the afternoon that is, but.
I would also say it's up for 30-day review as well.
Right, and.
Not just that Zoom call, but we can check into it.
And it will be recorded.
And it will be recorded.
And any questions that come through during that webinar will be recorded by us and answered in writing as a Q and A.
How long the contract? What's that?
It is a three-year agreement. There was a question about the humidity, I believe it was the motor didn't interface with the controller.
with the controller.
The three-year agreement includes this year as the base year.
Right.
So it's two years moving forward.
Right. After this year. I believe she also asked about the cause for the humidity, and I believe it was the controller, right, Mr. Johnson, the controller for the motor didn't interface correctly.
The HVAC PVC controls were not speaking to the mechanics correctly, therefore none of the humidity insurance in the area would be controlled properly, which has since been remedied as we had to come out and do their first visit to the president of the maintenance degree.
Right. And then to prevent issues, that's a, there's discretion to, we don't have to wait for board approval to move forward with remedying those types of situations. I will move on. Next, Jamie Ling.
Hi, good evening, Jamie Ling, Burnett Drive, this doesn't work, does it? Murraysville, so.
They can still hear you online.
Oh, can, okay, so, like many other people here, I was caught by surprise when I saw this on the agenda this morning. As most of you know, I own one of the small businesses that's going to be affected by this decision, and I'm not up here representing any of the other small businesses, but I do feel that you can look at me as kind of a model for how the local people in Murraysville are going to be affected by this. And I believe that a single-source contract is going to hurt, obviously, many small businesses in Murraysville and the surrounding area, and that this is not beneficial to our, our community. I totally understand wanting to protect your brand. It angers me when I walk into Walgreens and I see Franklin Regional stuff and the school is not benefiting. Over the course of many years where I have worked strictly with organizations only, I don't sell any Franklin Regional products that are not associated with an organization, I have donated tens of thousands of dollars back to the school through fundraising, and I think many other small businesses have done this also. So, not only is it affecting the businesses, but obviously booster organizations, because there was no communication to either one of us before this was announced. So I don't like to just come up and complain, I like to propose solutions. So what I would like to propose is that the single sourcing is not your only option. You also have an option to offer license agreements to all the small businesses here in the area and the surrounding areas, and I don't know if this has been looked into or not, but it's quite possible that you could generate more revenue that way, and I think that this is something that should be considered. So before you make a decision tonight, I would respectfully ask that you table this for more discussion and for more input by the community. I'm not sure, I was looking at my phone while this was going on, the Facebook page on the Murraysville community page has been blowing up about this. So I think that it's worth taking a pause, letting the community gather its stuff together, and actually look into possibly earning more revenue by including everybody. It solves a solution. Booster organizations get their choice, right? And the businesses can continue to keep the money here in Murraysville, where we're getting our EIT and all of our taxes, and it's keeping everything here. So that's, that's my proposal for that. I had a lot of other questions that I wanted to ask. I, I understand that Unity Printing bought Fancy Fox, I guess they're now like the umbrella company for that. So although that there will be a storefront here, which I think is great for people to have, are the purchase orders for the online orders, are those going through Latrobe? Or are those going through Murraysville? Does anybody know the answer to that? Okay, because I'm just curious, because if the online purchases are going through Latrobe, that means they get to keep the revenue and they get to keep that tax base, and we're losing the money that the small businesses here that are in Murraysville currently are putting back to the school district. So that's a question that I have. And the other thing I just wanted to say, on a personal note, I have been here before talking about the back-to-back meetings where items are brought up in the first meeting, catching community by surprise. There's a little bit of discussion for people that are able to get here on last-minute notice, and then it's voted upon immediately. This is a community, this is a, a big community decision that's affecting a lot of people in the school district, businesses, personal. Okay, so please just consider tabling this. Thank you.
Heather Schumaker.
Hi, Heather Schumaker, West Pittsburgh Street, Delmont, PA. I'm currently the band spirit wear person, and I waited to the second meeting to meet, because I wanted to learn, I didn't know what this meant, so I wanted to learn. And I'm asking if we could table this to have a discussion, to maybe come to some compromise. My concern is having the single source. When I first started as the spirit wear person, I was working with a team with other moms, and we were working with a vendor that wasn't returning our calls, wasn't answering our emails. We wanted to have a Christmas sale, we were unable to hit that Christmas sale, we had to pivot to Easter with a new vendor because we weren't getting their response. So having only one source, my concern is with all the boosters coming to them, they're going to get overwhelmed, and we're not going to have that option to change for three years. And that's then only if we can get a vote to change vendor. So the multi-source, to me, would be something to discuss, that we could have some choices there, and to not run into a situation where a company is overwhelmed with all the organizations coming to them.
Thank you. Susan Bain. Oh, she left. Laura? And Joy Sigmund.
Joy Sigmund. Again, here from football. I appreciate the comments and the explanation in the first meeting, because I didn't really understand what the rationale was behind this. And I have to sort of piggyback on what Jamie said this time. I do agree that maybe a licensing fee would be something that we could consider. I absolutely respect the fact that you've paid the money for the, for the branding and paying for the trademarking, I get that, and you should try to recoup some of that money. But maybe there's another way to do that. If we offer a licensing fee to some of the smaller vendors and they're willing to pay that, that could be an option. I know that Dr. Perino had said that, you know, the booster organizations have been using the logo free of charge, but, you know, in our defense, and if this was in place, I didn't know of it, I didn't know that there were any requirements about using the logo. I feel like we would be totally open to you controlling the brand and saying, here's the three things, or the two things, or the seven things, or whatever they are, to use, and you can only use them on apparel, because you said that there were maybe some things that you would not have, you would not have chosen them to be on. I don't know what you had in mind, but again, I think parameters in place are completely reasonable, and the booster organizations would be happy to work within that. And I can only speak for football, but I know that we would be willing to pay also some sort of licensing fee to have access to, to the logo, if we're allowed to do that. But I mean, if it's a money situation and a control situation of the brand, I feel like there's ways around this single-source vendor. And I totally understand that you've done your homework and you've toured the facility, and you have 100% confidence that they can produce all of the goods, but I think it's clear that the booster organizations don't share that 100% confidence. This is, like, we're really worried and freaking out about it. It would be great to, like, table this and maybe involve us in some sort of conversation where maybe we could become more comfortable, and whatever the decision is, I just ask that you consider our opinions, since I do think that we're the ones in the front line that are going to be really affected by whatever you decide tonight. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Solicitor comments? All right, thank you. I'll put items to be removed from the consent agenda item for separate action by members of the board.
So are we able, there seems to be more concern. Am I on? Can you hear me?
They can hear you online, but back in the room they're not.
Okay. So there seems to be more concern than I thought for this. Are we able to table this, or can I provide a motion to table this?
You have to pull it out. So what item would you like to be pulled out for?
Number 11.
Number 11? Okay. Any additional items?
Not for me.
Anybody else from the board on any additional items to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. All right.
With that, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 10 and 12 through 28.
You have anything?
Wait, I think, can we also pull out 15?
15? Okay. Anything else? No, you're fine. Anything else? All right, so right now I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 10, 12 through 14, 16 through 28. Josh? Second John. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So we'll open the floor for number 11. John, you brought it up, so go ahead.
So it's obvious that it's causing a lot of consternation with several of the organizations. I think, from my understanding, your concerns are going to be addressed at some point here in the near future. I would feel more comfortable if we voted after those concerns were addressed, and everyone given a chance to, you know, voice their concerns, and then we address those concerns directly. So I think that's the right, in light of all the public comments, I think that's the right thing to do.
Anybody else?
I just, I want to say that we, the original agreement was for five years, and we discussed that, and as a group decided that, that felt too long for us, and that for three years, which is really two years, was a more comfortable place for us all to sit. I just wanted everyone to.
I would agree with John that waiting, waiting and letting the, the community be a little more comfortable might be a good decision.
Anybody else?
I think part of the things that are of the concern, we have booster organizations talking to us as the, the largest voice to this, and I think a lot of, what we look at for the flexibility is, does this actually help or hurt those organizations? There are a lot of possibilities of being able to work congruently together in the same format to, to do your fundraising, to get your products. There can be a lot of work with the school, and I think board members are, that's one of the primary things, is we want this to work very well for our booster programs, because that's critical to, anybody that's ever been involved in any type of organization knows how critical the booster programs are. So it's, I understand seeing it and seeing the concern about it, but you have to understand also that the concern from the board is, is that does this ultimately help the district and help the booster programs to work efficiently, work together, find something that helps them distribute their products better, keep it out there longer for more people to use? And I think we as a board expect that, the administration wants to do that as well, to find that so that it can be an option that actually works better for us in the long run, together across the different organizations that are trying to raise money and support our programs in addition to the district. So that is definitely the intent of it, from my standpoint of what I've seen, and you can't get there until we go forward and would try to do it. And if it's, is something that doesn't work out from some of the concerns, I see no, there's no inkling that anybody would not want to continue that if it doesn't work out for, for everybody, but this has the potential for a lot of options and a lot of ways to work well for everyone, and there is absolutely that desire for every member up here to make it work better for those organizations and support them.
On your tour of the facility, did you see any issues with capacity, turnaround time?
No, matter of fact, it was highly organized, highly productive, to be honest with you, they were in, in a, in a state of, of mass production, and they had, so workers knew what was expected of them that day to meet their demands and their quotas, there were, there were screens throughout the org, throughout the company, in workstations, so people knew what they were working on and what they were going to work on next, and next, and next, and so there was definitely that ability for, for mass production that existed within the facility.
I think one of the other things was, I agree with Mark's sentiments as well, that this is mutually, I understand it's mutually beneficial, the idea is to actually drive more business for the boosters. You know, you look at it in a certain way, having this ability to be able to do it and do it together and outline it, is to be, more so is to actually create more business within the booster organization and, and drive revenue for all of you as well, not hinder you or take that away. Otherwise, it would be right back in here, and we would be able to do that on cause and get rid of it. Any other questions on that topic? What would be the, the impact or the result of saying if we did investigate the licensing opportunity and said, well, we, we would allow licensing of multiple entities, but our, let's say our select or preferred vendor or supplier is Unity Printing, or Fancy Fox, or somebody else? What is the, I mean, I'm trying to think in my head, when I'm sitting over here, I have my head in my hand, I'm trying to think of examples, and outside the world of, you know, schools, businesses that do something similar, like we have a preferred brand, so Toyota's our brand of car, for example, but we also allow people to buy Hondas, and, you know, that's not a good example, but there's got to be something out there where that happens. I, I internally struggle with the concept of not supporting family-owned businesses, local small businesses. I understand that Fancy Fox is still here, Unity Printing has been successful, and they've acquired Fancy Fox, that's still a company in, that has a branch or a location in Murraysville, but I personally struggle with the concept of not wanting to support, like, we have Walmart, we have Shop and Save, we had Ferris, Ferris is closed now, so, sorry, Ferris, thank you for the correction, I didn't hear the audiobook for the correct pronunciation for that one. But, you know, that, that's where personally for me, I struggle from the, the feedback from that is, are we doing the best for the community as a whole by not allowing those other vendors that have been supporting our school historically to still have those opportunities? If, if they are willing to agree to a contract that we define, is it worth it to eliminate that possibility?
So a couple of things, a couple of challenges we have. One is, there are districts and entities that sell license, access to their, their license, and then they sort of let, let it go, and that, and usually it's anywhere between 250 and a thousand dollars. And after that, that's sort of the end of it. The, the difference with this one is, is the, the, the revenue off individual, off of individual sales that we get. That's why when you look at, at the boosters, our, our goal is to support our boosters in their spirit sales, because the more revenue that they generate, or the more items that they sell, the, the more money we make to put back into student programs and things of that nature. And so the, the, and the other challenge of that is with our own internal staffing, when we're working with one, one vendor that's manageable, you, you widen that out, then you, it's the diluting the brand and being able to manage so many different, different components and different products.
Any other additional questions for discussion?
Any other additional questions for discussion on consent agenda 11?
You know, I just think that more options are better for everybody in general. I think there's pros and cons to this arrangement. I like the storefront. I like several different things. I share the concerns of Josh a little bit. But I think, you know, and I'm sure you all have different ways you like to do business, products, whatever, and it's a little... It's a little scary, as was mentioned. So, I think we should really table it and let the feedback and the discussions, you know, make sure everybody's very comfortable with this. This is a big deal, in my view. And we gotta make sure everybody's on board. But, I mean, football's huge. I guess soccer, and then band, and, you know, there's a lot of considerations. So, it may be a good option. There may be alternatives. I think there's things we need to consider. So, I think we should table it for one meeting.
Yeah. You'll have to motion if you want to table it.
Use the word "motion."
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to table it.
All right. Anybody second the motion to table?
I'll second it.
Hello?
Hello, Tracy.
Hi. I wanted to make a motion to table this.
Yep. We got it.
We got it.
Really?
Mrs. Bucero has seconded it.
Okay. Thank you. I haven't been able to hear anything in this whole discussion, but thank you.
That's not good.
Here we go to roll call. Ms. Wolf, roll call on the motion to table?
Mr. Pallett.
Yes.
Mrs. Bucero.
Yes.
Mr. Ozelina.
No.
Dr. Eschelman-Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Zebra. Mrs. Wollin. Mr. Kizloski.
No.
Mr. Wyman.
No.
Mr. Kromsky.
No.
Motion fails.
Now that we have to... I'll make a motion to vote on the... To vote on? Vote on item 11. Okay. I need a second to on... Vote on number 11. Josh is second.
No.
Mrs. Bucero.
No.
Mr. Ozelina.
Yes.
Dr. Eschelman-Ramey. She's here.
Let's go again.
Dr. Ramey.
She might not know what we're voting on.
Dr. Ramey, are you there?
Can we call her back, please?
Hi, Dr. Ramey.
Yeah. The call just dropped.
Okay. We're taking a vote on number 11. The motion to table it failed?
Yes.
So, it's your vote now as to whether or not you want this item to be passed.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We are now... Item 15. Ms. Wollin, you want to mention, since you brought it up, to pull it out?
I just wanted an opportunity to vote.
Opportunity to vote on it. Okay. Sure. I need an opportunity to vote on action item number 15, the panorama. Motion to...
Oh, is it to vote now?
To vote.
We still have to make a motion now, or not?
Yeah. Well, motion to... Ball. Motion to vote on it. Motion to vote on it.
That's what I'll make.
Mark...
I'll make the motion to vote on it.
You'll make the motion, and Mark will second?
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there a particular reason why we want to vote on this one? Is a roll call?
Someone needs the opportunity to vote no.
So, Ms. Wolf, we'll go to a roll call.
Mr. Pallett.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucero.
I say no.
I'm sorry?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Ozelina.
Yes.
Dr. Eschelman-Ramey.
Ms. Wolf, can you please clarify if we're voting to table this or if we're voting for the 30-day review?
30-day review.
Okay. Then my vote is yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Wollin.
No.
Mr. Kizloski.
Yes.
Mr. Wyman.
Yes.
Mr. Kromsky.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, I need a motion to adjourn the regular voting meeting. Deb, second. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
All right. Okay. I'm gonna go home.